Beautiful. All right. We're called to order, regular meeting. Board of Finance, Thursday, March sixteenth, six P M. Where you are. Uh, meeting will be recorded and made available on town's website pursuant to state law. If you're attending remotely, please remember to meet your microphones unless you're speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outside of each occasion. That's such person speaking. All votes taken which any member of this body participating remotely shall be taken by roll call. Unless the vote is unanimous, the chat feature would not be utilized or considered during this meeting. So we were called to order first business approval of meeting minutes and voting record for February sixteen. Actually, you want to do roll call? I skipped roll call there.
Yes.
Is Rebecca O'Donnell there?
Yeah, present.
Okay, Greg Benno.
Present.
Mary Hall.
Present.
Steve Kirsch.
Present.
Catherine Supper.
Present.
Rebecca O'Donnell.
Yeah, I'm here.
Rebecca, uh, we've got Ken Kellogg.
I'm here.
Ramonavsky.
I am here.
Heidi Mead.
She's a, I mean.
She's sneaking in. Uh. We have to go there as well. There he is. I see him in the back corner there. Frank there as well.
Yes.
There we go. And Deb Hart. No. All right, let's, not yet. That's okay. Uh, so now we'll go back to the approval of the voting, the minutes, voting record, February sixteen.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the meeting minutes and voting record for February sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any questions, discussions?
Yeah, Mike, this is Mary. Yeah, in, in the present, it's got Rebecca there and then she's got, she, she's in absent also. I think it just.
I wasn't there. Yeah.
There you go. We will make that adjustment. We added her in twice. Okay. Anybody got anything else? Any opposed? We're in none. We are passed. Our selectmen, you are up.
Thank you. So I had a couple of things. One was just, you know, you've got the, the tentative budget schedule in the packet of page one with tonight's meeting is pretty, is done. It'll all be checked off. Uh, which leaves the, you know, the rest, obviously of this, uh, up to the board here, uh, before it goes to referendum. I know you have it, I think, on new business to set dates. I mean, that's really the only thing I'd like to make sure we accomplish tonight. Um, so we can get all those, you know, get at least, you know, the next, uh, you know, whatever meetings are firm, we can at least get noticed, et cetera. So, um, so that's that. Uh, I think you all saw the, I, we, uh, we emailed on behalf of council their approved, uh, budget. I think you got an email and everyone's got their hard copies. Who wants a hard copy, I assume? So good.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Uh, and then the other item I just had in your packet is the, um, auditors communication to the Board of Finance. Um, K, K F Connor Davies has the memorandum in there, which is essentially a clean report, uh, that they had no concerns. Uh, the annual comprehensive finance report is, uh, complete and has been, uh, it is posted on our website. So the, uh, the audit is done. We, you know, normally would receive afterwards, uh, any uh, recommendations, but Ron and I have been advised that they do not, they will not have any uh, formal recommendations for us this year. They will have some discussion items.
Uh, no recommendations in the management letter?
There, no. Ron, you want to elaborate?
Has that, has that ever happened?
I, I think it's happened, uh, once or twice. It's been a while. It's probably been about.
Been a long time.
Yeah. Yeah. So they're going to have some discussion items, more of just suggestions, but nothing that they, um, are telling us that we, you know, really.
Like no weaknesses or any issues. That's wonderful news. Great job.
So it's great. Yep.
Yeah, that's unexpected, but great. Yeah, I love that.
So that is that.
Can, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Or I should probably ask it to Bron. This is Mary, uh, asking the question on the, uh, on the letter, they, they said under the uncorrected and corrected misstatements that there were no such financial statements and statements that remain uncorrected. And that none of the misstatements identified were material, either individually in the aggregate. So could you just tell me what material meant to them and how many were corrected?
That's determined by them. I don't actually know what their level of materiality was. So that's they, when they're planning the audit internally, that's determined by the auditors. It's not conveyed to me.
But they, but there were corrections made. Correct?
Yes, we did make adjustments.
Okay. So can you share?
There are always adjustments, right?
I understand that.
Yeah.
But so could you share how many adjustments were done and, and, and what impact it had to?
Do you want, I mean, do you want us to provide you copies? If you find that would be useful. We could certainly provide.
I'm not done going through the audit yet, so.
Well, are we talking like two or?
No, there were, no, there were probably in the general fund, maybe eight to ten, somewhere in that range. Yeah.
And the, so what was the impact on the final numbers? Or are you still working through them?
Um. I don't, I would have to. Like when you say impact, like I'm.
Well, because it said that the adjustments were corrected.
Correct.
So my question is the, the value of those corrections, were they up, down? And what was the?
So you would, so we would have to go through and summarize those, which I haven't done.
Okay.
Nor have I ever done them. So are you asking for that?
Well.
I think it's just trying to get a flavor of what we just.
Yeah. So there were, there were. Excuse me. I don't think there's any.
There's deferred revenue. There's some like deferred revenue.
Yeah. That's why I think it would be better if we.
So, so were they more balance sheet versus operating expenses?
There could have been, they could have been either.
Mostly balance sheet.
Mostly balance.
But there could be like, like some of them could be reclassed. They might actually not have an impact. They just didn't like how we classified it, for instance.
So. Was there any impact to the general fund?
Um, the fund balance that we submitted had there was no, no, there was no impact to the ending in general on about, yeah. There was not because what was submitted was, it was unchanged.
Okay.
It was the twenty million number previously given to you.
Yeah, twenty, I think twenty point three, twenty point three. Yeah.
I, I tied to the audit, so. Our numbers should be.
So, so their level of materiality, let me, let me back up. So they may have, let's, let's say hypothetically, and I don't know what their level of materiality. But if they find something they want to adjust, they'll adjust it even if it's below their level of materiality. Because they, we did, we did have some adjustments that were relative.
So then, once all the corrections are made and the, you know, and the adjustments are made, do we get a final uh, packet of what the budget was versus what the audited financials are for last year's period?
That's in the, that's.
That's in the statement, right.
So, yeah, so, which is posted online.
Okay.
So if you want a, you could either access it online. If you want a hard copy, you can print out hard copies. We don't. I don't think we get as many hard copies as we.
So I can just go on the website and pull it off the financials? Okay.
So the.
Underwater reports of Department of Finance. And yeah, and if any of the board members want a printed copy, we can run that off. I mean, it's a large document, so.
And to follow up, if you want the adjusting entries, you're, you know, we could certainly provide those to you. The auditors provide them to us. We welcome and.
I'd like to see them.
Sure.
Thank you. That was it. That was my question on that. Yes, thank you.
All right, Superintendent.
Hi, everybody. Mike, I sent you, um, very crude, uh, little Excel spreadsheet cut out. I just made my share with the board. I have. I just wanted to, I just wanted to share with everybody, um.
Thank you.
Kind of where we are now, uh, just just to keep this, you know, this board of, uh, rise of everything. So, um, you know, when I budgeted for next year, I budgeted kindergarten at the same levels it was at for this current year. Um, you remember, uh, two years ago, our current first grade class now is kind of a bubble, especially at, uh, Juan Hollow, where we had six sections, um, because of enrollment. And I kind of, we kind of anticipated that to some extent because that was, you know, those kids were, you know, a lot of families that kept their kids home and didn't send them to kindergarten when, uh, during the pandemic. So they might've started the year, you know, especially if they had a later birthday, you definitely work on a, um. So what this, what this shows is that our current year enrollment right now, so the kids in kindergarten right now, we have a hundred and one at Juan Hollow, fifty at Monroe Mentory, and eighty-one at Stephanie. As of, this was actually, because this is what I shared with the Board of Ed first, as of March sixth, so about a week and a half ago, almost two weeks ago, we were already at a hundred and one at Juan Hollow. Thirty-seven at Monroe, which is trending about the same, but we were already at a hundred and one at Juan Hollow and seventy-eight at Stephanie with six months ago before school. Um, you know, that's before anyone moves into town, you know, that's saying that everybody has registered. And I know they haven't because as of, this is just our, the latest information. Kindergarten is, um, at Juan Hollow is at a hundred and eight now today. Stephanie's at eighty-seven. And Monroe Al is at forty-one. And just to give you an idea of what we picked up this, when I look back, when I first saw these numbers, I'm like, all right, well, what did this look like at this point last year? You could see I had seventy-one kids enrolled at, at Juan Hollow. That seventy-one became one oh one. I had thirty-six at Monroe Al. That thirty-six became fifty. So that's why the Monroe one doesn't concern me as much as the Juan Hollow and the Stephanie one, because Stephanie, we had fifty-five registered at this time last year, and that ended up with eighty-one. So I just, I wanted to, um, you know, again, that was, that was not included in my budget. Um, we are also looking at trying to do some really creative things with our pre-K program, which, uh, I talked about before, it's just multiply, it's doubled in the past couple of years. Um, for, you know, a lot of reasons. A, coming out of the pandemic and the lack of birth to three services. Um, but we are looking to run, and it's something we're actually going to talk about at the, at the, our board meeting this week, but changing the model of pre-K. Um, there's something like a split day program, um, but that will entail some transportation. We'll have to have a bus coming in the middle of the day to take them around. So a bus for a year is about eighty thousand dollars. So just, you know, um, we all doom and gloom. We still, we are doing our best to, you know, uh, save as much our bester money as we can to, uh, fly towards next year to increase, to, uh, you know, address anything. And then, uh, we still haven't gotten our insurance numbers yet. So we're waiting on those. So we got the, the cap at seven and a half. Um, hopefully we'll have that information soon, you know, while the, while the budget's near it ends.
Joe, when does the, when does the, uh, open enrollment end?
It never ends.
It never.
Yeah, because kids enroll, I enrolled, I had a family Thanksgiving with five kids.
Now, where, where are we in pre-K? Now compared to where we were a year ago? At this time?
I can find that out for you. I know what, right now, we're at about just over.
I mean, I mean, honestly, I don't want to dive into the weeds a lot tonight because yeah, I was, I'm going to ask you if you wanted to take next week with the Board of Ed, when we do our calendar. Um, because we're going to devote, obviously, at least one night to you guys. You know, on the workshop.
Thank you. Okay.
And I figured it's this way you'll have your pre-K thing all worked out and then we can really get into it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's fine.
Cool. All right. Um. Stephanie Volunteer Fire Department Quarterly Report. I know that's in the packet. If anybody had any questions or Ron, you want to call anything out on there?
Yeah, no, that, it just wasn't included in, um.
Last one, right.
Last month. We, we received it late, so, uh.
Included for your review.
Okay. Um, cool. Public participation. Is there anybody there?
Nobody here.
Nobody there? Anybody online on the phones? All right. As usual, not a lot of public, uh, new business, so I can get to dates now. Perfect. So let's get our calendars out. So what I was thinking and what I talked to Ken today about was to try to do kind of the next, uh, four Thursdays. And then to try to book schedule the seventeenth to hopefully do a final uh, wrap up and, you know, mill rate and calculation and all that. So that would give us uh, the sixteenth, the twenty-third, the thirtieth, and the sixth. I'm sorry, the twenty-third, thirtieth, sixth, and thirteenth. And then the seventeenth. And then we can always add, uh, if we need to, in the meantime, when we feel like we're, you know, backing up, but, uh, and I was going to propose again, depending on, uh, Joe and Ron's availability, kind of starting with the Board of Ed, because I think that's kind of always the biggest thing. And then we can always get them back later on if we want to get into more details or thoughts on that, everyone?
I didn't, I didn't have your April sixth on the list that came over.
Okay.
I didn't actually check that one for conflicts for meeting rooms though, so let me just, uh.
So Mike, say that, say that.
Then I can find out.
Basically, it's just the next, it's the next four Thursdays.
Okay, so Mike.
Twenty-three, thirty, six.
Six, thirteen.
And six and thirteen. And then we have our regular board meeting on the twentieth.
Right, but I think we're due on the twentieth, right, Ken? I mean.
Twentieth is the date it has to be, um. That's the last day that you have. Yeah. So I mean, I guess, I mean, the thirteenth. The thirteenth, I mean, gives you plenty of time. You could always do another, squeeze another meeting in there if you had to.
Right. That's what I was kind of penciling in the seventeenth, just to have a tentative in case something changes. Uh, I mean, again, it'll depend on how it goes. I mean, we could be wrapped up on the thirteenth and then
Right.
You know, do the official vote on, you know.
Yep. Well, it, it does say on, on the draft, the final vote on budget could be on the twentieth. So e- even though it's due, then as long as we complete.
Right. I'm sure it could be, but I would like to have it. I mean, obviously, you know, God forbid, we have a blizzard in the middle of April or a flood or some, you know what I mean? I'm not really good at turning my homework in the last.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I would not, I would not recommend waiting till the last day. That's probably not a good idea.
So Mike, would we, would we devote like March twenty-third to a specific topic in each one after that to a specific topic?
Well, my feeling is we would do the, we would do the, the Board of Ed for sure on the twenty-third. Uh, and then we could, you know, what I was going to propose is everybody take a week to kind of go through uh, what the town council did. And then maybe on the twenty-third, we could make a decision of who we want to meet with on the thirtieth or bring in. And then, you know, we could schedule topics. Uh, obviously, we want to take one night at some point and uh, you know, talk about debt service and bonding is one certainly big subject. Uh, but usually the first couple of weeks we do the departments. And go from there.
And we would have one on revenue also, correct?
Yeah, we always cover that. I mean, we could.
At the end.
Usually, I was going to say, usually that's one of the things we do at the last times, um, usually towards the end, because we have better numbers of what this year is trending as.
So revenue, revenue, could we temporarily put it in on the thirteenth, Mike?
Certainly. That makes perfect sense to me.
Revenue and bonding on the thirteenth?
Thirteenth, yeah. And then Board of Ed on the twenty-third, and that gives us two weeks to do the department.
That's at six P M., right?
Uh, that would be ideal for me if that works for everybody else.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, that's.
I don't like to start too late.
All our other meetings are.
Right, exactly.
Week, I'll, um, it'll be a little tight for me next week. I'm up in Middletown till about five fifteen. But I could always call in and then join in.
Well, and then also I was figuring next week we would do our public hearing.
That was my next question. Good.
Yeah.
So we usually do the public hearing at the beginning. I mean, honestly, the last few years, it hasn't taken very long because there's not that many people. Um, so hopefully we'll roll right into the Board of Ed right after.
So Mike, uh, this Mary again, if we do the Board of Education on the twenty-third, Joe, are you going to have your, uh, better numbers that you were talking about by then? Or do you need another week?
It's not going to, no, uh, you know, it's not going to change much.
Okay.
The only thing that'll change is, you know, we probably won't get insurance in for another three weeks, but we'll just make that adjustment if we see fit.
Okay.
You know, we'll know, we'll have better insurance numbers later.
Yeah, I mean, we can always bring bring Joe back if there's some questions or new news. That's, that's not a problem. We're just going to devote the twenty-third to the Board of Ed.
Correct.
Okay. And if we may, if we vote on this tonight, you'll notice this tomorrow. So like
I'll, whatever the chairman wants us to notice, we'll notice. I mean, typically.
I mean.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, because we're, we're having a meeting next Thursday. I'd like to get this out to the public as soon as.
Well, the twenty-third, we've got to, we're doing the public here. We got to notice that right away.
Yeah, that's my.
Yeah, I would get all the, I would love to get all the news out tomorrow, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I want all of them. I, yeah.
No, no.
Yeah. No, the twenty-third, I agree. We should. We should get out right away. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, anybody else have thoughts on that? Are we good with that?
Six P M. It's every.
Okay. Sounds good.
Good. All right.
Cool.
That was easy.
All right.
We're getting good at this stuff. All right, review the, uh, twenty twenty-three financial reports, general fund budget report. Ron, you got anything there for us?
Yeah, so it's been noted that, uh, so it was discussed, uh, before the meeting started that the, uh, you guys have not been receiving the revenues bills. We'll make sure you get that.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Phase off.
A bad thing. You see the summary of the Treasury report.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, if you want, I, I mean, there's, on the Board of Ed side, we just received the excess cost grant. Like four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. First piece of that, that, um, all of it. On the town side, um, right, you know, I, um, I just looked at, uh, you know, it's in your packet. Uh, taxes are, are, are trending fine. Revenue as a whole is, there, there's nothing, um, concerning at this point. Um, certainly, uh, frank, ten dollars, so. So on the revenue side, no, no concerns. And again, my apologies for not being in the packet. Um, on the expense side, I don't know. I'll, I'll entertain any questions. Anyone have anything?
But on my side.
Good.
All right. Anything on the public, on the school stuff?
School side, same thing. No, nothing, you know, we're as we're on the town, you know, we're, we're, some of the utilities are running a little hot heat. Um, nothing, nothing, uh, overall concerning at this point, though. So we, we are tracking well on the electricity. So we had that, um, transfer that came over from the, uh, town side. Um, we're still, we're tracking well, even without that transfer. So um, no concerns. Uh, myself, um, the superintendent and assistant superintendent have spent the last couple of days, um, reviewing current year. Um, there's been a lot of movement on the budget that's, uh, staffed. Um, so we're, we're looking to, um, you know, where we've got available funds, where we might be over in accounts. And, um, again, I think the trend is good overall, but we're trying to um, come up with a tight number on whether we're going to be able to push more, um, grant funds to next year.
Got it.
As opposed to needing them this year.
Got it.
Mike, I just have one other question. On the Board of Finance contingency, we have dollars unused.
Mm-hmm.
Do you, what is your overall gut right now that we're in March? Is.
Are we going to need them?
Yeah.
My gut right now is, is I don't think we're going to. No.
Nothing on the radar.
Nothing on the radar.
Nothing on the radar that would say we'd need that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would have to be a, a rare contingency. You know, I mean, it would have to be something. Right. Yeah.
And on the, on the, on the board side, I'll just say, you know, there's the special ed fund, you know, it doesn't look like we're going to need it at this point, but you know, unfortunately that changes daily.
Yeah.
So, and that's why it's there, right?
Yeah.
So what we're, you know, we're keeping an eye.
So bottom line on the Board of Ed that I'm looking at on page three is you've got five and a half million so a lot available yet, and, and you haven't encumbered that. So you're going to chew into that, but
Yeah.
That would help the amount for the.
Hourly salaries, but I'm.
And things like the bond principal and stuff, there's always a second. Looking back, that's, that's only that's only got fifty percent expended or.
Yeah, so that's the town side and then we, yes.
Right.
So that's, that's the last half of the, uh, and that's actually the last hundred one thing.
Oh, okay. We, right, we got that all down? Yeah, right.
Wow.
Man, I almost sort of forgot about that. Okay.
Right. So that's just a timing thing that'll clear. Okay.
Okay. Cool. All right, tax collector.
Hello, everybody. Uh, any questions?
There she is.
She's there.
I wondered who that phone number was.
Okay, um. Any questions? Uh, we're trending, okay, a little low, but I think, uh, we had the, the link notices go out a little late, unfortunately, because I was hospitalized. So a lot of them are coming in now. And then everything will be sent to collections on the collection agency on April third. So if they don't pay by then, then we'll fifteen percent collection fee goes on it. And then, uh, well, hopefully we get more money. Real estate is trending nicely.
Yeah, those pies look really closed, Deb, don't they?
What's that?
I said the pies look really closed.
Yes.
Just a motor vehicle, so.
You know, one thing I noticed is we budgeted for the money that we're getting for the state. We didn't go that much.
The money from the state?
Money from the state?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say that again?
The money. If you look at how much we budgeted for the motor vehicle, the seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three, we only billed eighty-three. Um.
The cap.
Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
Eighty-three thousand. Um, eighty, yeah, eighty-three thousand. So I mean, when we took the numbers, I mean, we're really close with that, with the we only build, I'm looking at my sheet here, seventy-three, I'm going across. We only billed seventy-two thousand, nine hundred. So we're, we're short like a hundred.
No, you don't mean, you don't, you don't mean seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty thousand?
That's all we built.
No.
No, she.
No, you, you lost me.
I think she's talking about from the state. Is she talking about something?
I'm confused.
Do you see the budget? Seventy-three thousand, seven million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three. Then you go across the sheet to the collectible balance. That's how much we actually build. We built out seven seven million, two hundred and ninety-four thousand. So more than we possibly build. So that is never going to happen. We can't collect more than we built. And I think when we did the budget, we figured out the monies that the state was going to give us for. For the other lots.
Right, right.
So I just, I just want to point that out to you guys because we, you budgeted the full amount, but the state is supposed to reimburse us the difference. But I just want to point that out because that is.
And when are we supposed to get the reimbursement from the state?
We already, we got it ready.
We get it already. Okay, good. So it's already in.
But that doesn't reflect in my totals.
On your report, right.
So what does that put that ninety-two percent in?
I, I have no idea. I don't know what Jeff was got from the state.
It, it's not taxes. It's a, it's a grant. It's, yeah, it's municipal aid from, in lieu of taxes, basically, from the state.
So it'll just go in the revenue line as like an other?
Exactly.
Okay, as another.
I think, I think your, your, your metric to collectible is still accurate. Your metric to budget is artificially deflated for one year.
Exactly.
So.
That's what I'm trying to.
Make a, make a little foot, make a little footnote there for your, for your report. Doesn't reflect on, doesn't reflect on your office.
Correct.
It doesn't reflect on my office, because I can't collect more than we build.
Right. That'd be a good trick.
But, you know, that, this was, it was anticipated that this happened. We just couldn't, you know, it was happening as the budget was getting hurt.
Right.
Last year.
Exactly.
Right. So now we know, but I'm just, I just want, you know, when you look to budget, I may be lower to the budget. I might not get the budget number, because that many came from the state.
Right.
Right, and that is a good thing to, to make.
Right, and maybe when we, maybe when we do the budgeting this year, we might want to look at pulling that state revenue out as a separate. Revenue line and, and reducing these, right, and, right, exactly, and showing her less, perfect. Good.
Okay, I just wanted to make a note of that, so everyone.
There you go. It's on the record.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so, this is Steve, um, is that not going to be in existence, that fund from the state? Going forward?
No, it is.
Okay, so.
It is.
So we're going to have the same situation. We've just got to figure out how to.
It's in the, it's in my proposed budget, which I will not adjust, so you'll, you'll see a, it's over a million dollars in a revenue line.
I didn't pick up on that.
Yep, um, and that's something when we go over revenue, um, we want to talk about, because in the governor's. Uh, budget, the number is actually slightly higher than we first calculated, so. Depending on where we are at the, you know, April.
Thirteen.
April thirteenth, we may want to, you know, we may want to adjust that a little bit, but, you know, let's do a wrap, you know?
Mike, Mike, can I make a suggestion, recommendation? Could, could we move revenue up one week from the April thirteenth? So that in case we have follow-on questions, it gives us two good working sessions, because my gut tells me that's where a lot of, uh, uh, potential opportunity might.
Yeah, that's fine with me. I have no issue with that.
Okay, great.
So what does that be?
It'll be the sixth, yeah.
On the sixth.
Yes. And we can always adjust the, we can always adjust the agendas week to week, as long as we, you know, push them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, typically when, you know, Mike, when we notice them, I mean, on the candidate's schedule, there'll be bullets of what you anticipate to discuss, but for the agenda, we.
I mean, exactly, we also sometimes just put workshop, right?
We just put budget workshop, that's.
So we can cover it, so that, so we can talk about anything we want.
Exactly. Yeah.
So Mike, while, while we're on this with Deb, the, the question that was, um, or conversation that, um, occurred during. Our joint meeting with the town council was about looking at. Our projections for collectible percentages going forward and maybe tightening them up. And I'd like to put in a request now, so that, uh, everybody has some time to work on it. I'd like to see what the numbers were for each of these categories for the last five years. And I think that would be useful for us to have, you know, a, as soon as it's reasonable to get.
Okay, I, I could get for as long as I was asked, but there are many stuff he had all, uh, password protected, and I can't get into it.
It's me. We can, we should be able to figure that out.
And I think we have, I think most of that, those percentages should be in the financial statements.
They should be.
They are in the.
They're in there anyway.
Yeah. But, right, so we can, we can pull it right out of there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
That's good.
Never know what you find with a question. Thank you.
All right, Treasurer.
Yep. Mike, we've got a couple of things tonight, um, just on, on the revenue side. The interest for the month was two forty-seven, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven sixty-three. Here today, it was a million, two seventy. Obviously, we're still benefiting from the elevated rates, well above plan. Nothing, nothing new there. Um. However. In what has happened in the news in the last week around bank failures, I thought it was appropriate to do a little bit of risk assessment.
Hmm.
Um, had a good conversation with our friends at Newtown Savings Bank. We've got about forty accounts there. Um, most, everything we have is covered with. That goes above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we have spread out in those I C S accounts. The general account, what we did with the two Lily and Wilton accounts last year kind of protected us nicely, besides getting the increased interest. So all of that is protected. We have three accounts out of those forty where we're not a hundred percent protected. One is the general fund. We keep a balance of eight hundred thousand that is attached to that sweep account. Everything else we get in there, we're getting that high interest rate. And the I C S accounts, they take the money we have. And it's well above two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it's spread across a variety of institutions, so you're fully protected F D I C wise. The general fund will keep about eight hundred thousand. I talked to Newtown Savings Bank. When we did that, they kind of set the threshold in conjunction with us, saying, what are we comfortable to keep in a normal? Bank account as opposed to the I C S. I'm gonna talk to them, see if we can lower that a little bit. It doesn't impact our ability, finance's ability, to be able to move funds around and everything else. The other one that, there's two others. One is the M M R account. We have about six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in that account, so everything above two fifty isn't protected. I, I, I don't have any doubt about Newtown, but at the same time, to be safe, I talked to them about, is there any reason why we couldn't? And, and talked to Ron, is that an account that we have lots of money in and out? We don't. Um, potentially moving that into an I C S account, see if we could do something similar to what we did with the Lily and Wilton accounts. Where we keep about fifty or a hundred thousand dollars and put the rest in the I C S accounts, get the higher interest rates, as well as protect it for the two hundred and fifty thousand. The third account that we have is the Board of Ed Cafeteria Fund. I think that one, a lot of stuff is in and out, in and out, so I don't think there's really much we can do there. That we have about seven hundred and five thousand. So our exposure in terms of our main accounts in Newtown is really very limited. Most of it's protected. So feel pretty good about that. Um. Stiff. Which is the state account. We keep about nine million dollars in there. And in talking with Ron, understanding it, it's where our grant money comes into and everything else.
Right.
Should be absolutely no issues whatsoever. However. For the first time since I've been looking at this, because I look at the stiff rate on a daily basis. They have not posted the daily rate since the thirteenth of the month. Did they ever have an issue? They did. If you go back about ten years ago, they did have some issues. I don't think it's a red. But that may be one of those things as we start evaluating treasury bonds. We may want to keep a portion of that, kind of spread our risk out a little bit, because right now the treasury rates are good.
I was just gonna say, what's the spread, what's the spread difference now between the treasuries and the stiff?
It, it's very, well, if I use that, Mike. If I look at a six-month, it's four point six eight. The stiff, the last recorded rate we had on the stiff was four point six four. So very close, the three-month on this, on the treasury is four point six two.
Right.
So i- it's just one of those things that we're looking, again, I don't have any near-term doubt about Newtown or about the state. But the fact that they haven't published it, and I did put an inquiry into the state, I haven't heard back from them yet. Why have they not done?
Think there's a lot of uncertainty based on, because I think, because of this, you know.
Exactly.
Increased risk, right, right. Everything's, everything's afraid that the Fed's gonna slow up now because of the pressure that they put on the market, and now.
Right.
Rates might back down a little bit. So we might, um. We might actually consider, uh.
Should we diversify it all?
That's what I'm. Took the words out of my mouth.
Take some of what's there and.
Correct.
We gotta make sure that from, from a cash flow standpoint.
We can handle it, right?
I'm sorry, Mike.
No, I think you're exactly right. I think it's a cash flow situation and how much, it's just like we used to do laddered CDs, we used to do other things as well, so. I think that's something we should definitely, uh, talk about when we sit down during the budget, because it. With the, with the, you know, with the rates on T-bills right now, I think it's an interesting place to put some money.
Yeah, no, I, I, and again, we've been talking about that for a while. Um, but we've been watching what the Fed's doing. And again, we have another Fed meeting next week. It'll be interesting to see where they are if you. If you think about where everybody was probably about two weeks ago, they were talking a fifty basis point increase.
Yeah.
Now they're talking about either twenty-five or maybe a.
Or zero, right.
So, you know, we'll, we'll get a better sense of that going into these meetings. But again, I think keeping our alternative diversifying, uh, makes sense. I, I don't have any grave concern, but I figured it was worthwhile doing a little bit of.
No, it's a great, great, great thing to do in this time, absolutely, without a doubt.
That's it.
Right. All right, um, the three-year budget model, um, I know we're gonna talk about a little bit of that. I just wanted to touch on it slightly here. Um, we will have a little bit of a challenge that was a little unforeseen, but, um, because of collective bargaining. Uh, and salaries, uh, we will not be able to forecast out, uh, salaries. So we can look at a lot of other categories, but on advice of, uh, legal, um, that the possibility can be used against us in negotiations, uh. There is, uh, a resistance to having us put anything on paper. Um, and possibly, you know, considered outside of collective bargaining. So, uh, we won't be doing the forecast on those particular line items. We'll be able to look at everything else, which will still give us some insight, but it won't be as good as we had hoped. So, so everybody's aware of that.
This is Mary again. Ron, the salaries would be what percentage of the total budget that we wouldn't be able to forecast out?
The, on the, um. On the Board of Ed, overall budget, I want to say it's two-thirds on the municipal side.
Two-thirds?
I'm gonna say it's about a third. Is it about ten million of the thirty? That's about a third. So you're talking about the, the, the increase, so, yeah.
So, so, maybe I misunderstood. So of the total. Operating budget on the municipal, on municipal side.
Hmm, it's about ten percent.
About ten percent is salaries?
Hmm.
And on the Board of Edu, ten percent?
Third, thirty.
Not third, thirty-three percent.
Third of it, a third of it is salaries. Okay. And on the Board of Education?
Um.
It's probably two-thirds.
Yeah, probably.
Probably two-thirds, yeah.
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 Okay.
Yes. But again. I mean, first, I just want to, I, I just want to thank Ron for what he put together here. I know he's been working like a dog on it, and it's. You know, based on limited information that we have, I think it's a good tool. Um, but I think Ron's already put in kind of an overall Board of Ed escalation factor, which would include. Salaries.
Salaries, yes.
Because that contract is resolved, so there's less unknown there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, but we have a three years on the T-Bs now, so we have that, that's a fixed number we can look at. It's the open contracts that we can't address.
Exactly, yes.
So, so what, so what is open now, or? What will be open next fiscal year on the Board of Ed side?
Secretaries right now and administrators, um, we'll show administrators next year.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay.
And, and those go, Joe, for how many years?
Uh, depends on the contract.
Depends on the contract.
Those are both three.
Yeah.
Typically three.
Some. One, it's five. To my experience, it's small.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's.
And on the town side?
Hmm.
It would be mostly the police?
What?
For the, uh, salaries bargaining, for, for bargaining. That would be it, right? Okay.
I mean, there's.
No, there's a lot of, there's a lot of bargaining.
Four bargaining on the town side and seven on the board.
That's right. Okay.
So what's the, so Mike, this is Mary again for, for recording. So what's the next steps with this, with, with the three-year plan?
So depends on what, yeah, we're gonna work with it when we, uh, do our budget, you know?
Go home and memorize it.
Yeah, I mean. I guess, you know, when Ron and I were talking earlier, I mean, I think, you know, as, as things become known, you can.
Plug it in, right?
Plug and play.
You can, you can certainly do some, you know, well, what if it's, uh. You know, we, we try to plug in, uh, to the extent when you, you know, large things like E C S, kind of the biggest revenue, I mean, try to. Project that out, because we know that's declining, um, and you can see how that impacts things, and I think it's a good, uh, you know.
Yeah, we can basically use it as a model and run it.
Use it as a model, um. There's some.
What if scenarios?
Operating lines that we, we said, well, you know, like. There's certain contracted services for vendors. We, you know, we have a contract, so we know we can project it out, um. A lot of these, you don't know, they're, they're. They're, they're, you know, Ron, but a lot of these is flat, because we.
Guys, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to jump for a couple of minutes. I just had a call, it won't give. Um, but you guys, Rebecca can take it over from here.
Okay.
I'll see you next week.
Bye, Mike.
Bye, Mike.
So, so we'll kind of use this also as we set, when we look at revenue and any opportunities with the general fund. We have this now as a sidebar to look at what could be anticipated for the upcoming year's cost.
And, you know, absolutely. I mean, knowing that, you know, none of us have a crystal ball, although we're trying, you know, assess the available information, we're trying to project it.
I'm sure they sell crystal balls on Amazon.
Sure they do. How, the question is, what are they telling?
How do we know if there are contracts that are already accounted for in here that?
So on the town side, there are no, and, and in the out years, they're all, so none of them are accounted.
Okay.
Right. So there, it's just flat.
So that's where we have to.
So that's, that's right.
Hmm.
Well, see, that's it, we really can't, can't play around.
Can't believe, yeah.
The theory being, if we put something down on paper, collective bargaining.
I mean, collective bargaining is not something you.
Yeah.
You know, it's not something you do publicly, so we don't wanna, we don't want to start.
You don't want to play your hand in the, in the.
Yeah, I know.
But you have to do something in the aggregate to the budget.
But you have a feel of where, of where it's going, trending, and we could look at.
Right.
Yeah.
There's, it's a question of what you're gonna commit to paper, you're not gonna commit it to paper, according to the public record.
Yeah, I mean, we have history, we can go by, but, you know.
So this three-year plan draft, does it stay with us? It doesn't go to, I mean, with the Board of Finance and the finance group and, and those here, it doesn't, we're not sharing this with the town council or anything? At this point?
It was, I mean, this is a.
It's a tool.
The tool that Board of Finance requested, so, I mean.
But I mean. Yeah, I had no intention of publishing it, you know?
Right.
So it stays with us?
Hmm.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
This is good, Ron.
Thank you.
How long did it take you? It's been a couple of years in the making, right?
Yeah.
I would say two months.
Yeah.
Look at the, uh, the base of it, is the base budget that Heidi put together, and I was.
All right, the next item is a review of roads.
Yeah, so, um, I'm hoping, fingers crossed, that V H B will have. A final in time for me to get to our next town council meeting. It's the end of this month. Um, so that's what I'm. Um, so that's what I'm that's what I'm pushing for. So you should have by the end of the month some uh, some solid solid reports.
So Chris's report just last time here said that V H B was in their process of solidifying their numbers.
They were dealing with their Q A, yeah.
Okay, so they pleaded that now?
I do not know that for certain. I know that they've had some conversations and I might my, the last time, you know, the last time I spoke with Chris, he was like, you know, they're finishing up the final loose sentence and we, he said that we look like we're uncharted to be able to have a report to council if we're running.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Alright, anything else? Make a motion?
Steve urge, motion to adjourn.
Mary Hall's second.
Yeah, see everyone next week.
Hey.
Good night, everybody.